Regular city council meeting for the city of Larkspur. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hillmer.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Vice Mayor Way.
Here.
Mayor Chu.
Here.
And the record should reflect that Councilmember Harf is excused.
Okay, thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, rather than normal council business, what we're going to do tonight is to start with some presentations from, first, we will have a report by Judy Kirschbaum for the Marin County Commission on Aging, and the second one will be the Larkspur-Cortumadera Unified School District on the construction funded by Measure D. So, Ms. Kirschbaum, welcome, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something before she begins?
Yes.
It doesn't sound like it is on.
Do I need it on?
Yeah, they're recording.
So while you're fixing them, I'm going to talk about you for a second. Judy Kirschbaum is an excellent representative for Larkspur on Commission on Aging, so thank you for taking on that role. Secondly, she is the ad for the Marin General Healing Stories. I don't know if you've seen her, but she takes up half the page of the Marin IJ twice a week. She's on buses. She is at the bus stop. I mean, so we had lunch together last week. I know people were circling around the table going, "I know that face." Anyway, congratulations on that.
You're like 10 minutes of fame.
Well, it's been going on for two years now.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyway.
It's been very nice.
Good, all right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you and welcome.
Thanks. So I want to thank Ann Morrison because if it weren't for Ann...
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
If it weren't for Ann, I wouldn't have known about serving Larkspur on the Commission
of Aging, so I'm grateful to Ann. I'm also grateful to Ann for helping me with our project last, this whole last year, and I know she gave a report, so I'm not going to do that again, but that was really gratifying. We had three?
Three.
Four? No. Five? Whatever. I think it was five. Lunches where we gathered seniors and we met at the left bank, and we gave them an opportunity to have a voice in Larkspur and tell us what wasn't right, what's working, and that was really wonderful, and people really were pleased to be invited, so thank you.
And Valerie Pitts' mom was there. Her mom was there. She's so proud of you.
Oh, okay. Well, she was at one of the lunches?
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay, great. So, there's something going on in the county which might affect Larkspur in a good way, but I'm not sure how this is going to work, but I'll just tell you about it. So, age-friendly is a new concept that's coming down from the World Health Organization to make, you know about it, to make communities age-friendly, and I want to, I can't remember all of this, so I'm just going to tell you that some of the examples of an age-friendly community are longer signals at traffic lights, the ability to walk to libraries, stores, and medical offices, and live independent without a car, and these are some of the issues that they want to address. But, and then something, somebody sent me something from the 2015 Conference on Aging, and this says, "3.6 million Americans miss or delay medical appointments every year because they lack a ride to the doctor. Given that American population is aging, and about half of us will live at least one, will have one chronic condition, getting regular health care is more important than ever." And so this goes along with what Age Friendly America is trying to do, and Sausalito is the first community that has an age-friendly doctrine, and it was very involved. It took a task force to make it happen. I don't know what it entails, but I'll be going to a symposium on May 14th. If any of you are interested, there's the Healthy Aging Symposium put on by the Commission, and its speaker is Matt Willis, M.D., and he's going to be speaking about living in an age-friendly Marin. So I'm going to go to that and find out what it entails, but I might come back to the city council and ask for volunteers to be on a task force, because I know I can't do this by myself, but I don't know, you know, yet what it means, so. And you and I talked about this a little bit, so. And also, for some of you that don't know, there's a Ross Valley Marin Villages, and that encompasses, I didn't know this until a few months ago, that encompasses Larkspur because Larkspur is too small a city to get a Marin Village, so it's Kentfield, Ross, and Larkspur. So if anybody wants to know about contacting Marin Villages, it's called Ross Valley Village. I don't know, I think that's it. I think I have you up to date.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions they'd like to ask Judy? You know, I had a question because, and you don't have to have an answer, it's just more of a concept thing, because one of the things we just went through was the housing element. So, you know, we're working, you know, that document is to identify, you know, all the places in which we would have, you know, potential housing in this zone, and as such. So, what's your, we all know that there's a shortage of affordable housing, especially as the population starts to age, but has the Commission on Aging come out with any recommendations related to land use that we can incorporate into, you know, our own municipal planning?
Not that I know of. I know that there's a new community in Nevada that I heard about. I don't know what it is, but it's, I mean, I don't know where it is, but it's in Nevada, and it's this new, low-cost senior living. And then the only other thing I know about is what's going to happen at Whistlestop. You know about that? Yeah. I don't know if that's been approved yet, but I haven't heard anything for Larkspur, unfortunately.
Oh, yeah, it wouldn't just be Larkspur, I'm just thinking from the county.
Oh, just in the county?
County.
Well, those are the two that I know about, but I can find out, and I'll call you, I'll let you know.
Yeah, it's, I'm thinking more in terms of broader recommendations that they would have for planning rather than specific projects.
Oh, that I don't know, but I know somebody I can talk to, and I'll get back to you. Do you want me to?
Oh, yeah, that'd be good. It's not immediate, but, yeah, if you have something, it'd be helpful.
Okay, great.
Yeah, go ahead.
Catherine, did you have something?
Sure, but go ahead.
And this is more from my information. The Commission on Aging have, can you tell me what the relationship is, if any, between the Commission and the County Health and Human Services Department, specifically their Senior Access Program?
I know that Senior Access comes to every Commission meeting and gives a report, but they're not, they're not connected, but they report to the Commission on Aging.
So they...
I'm sure they are funding it.
It's an awareness.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
You know, they have a new director, I guess, a year ago, too.
Jim?
Yeah, yeah.
And Senior Access is for dementia, right? You know that?
It's for cognitive...
Brain injury.
Impairment, yeah.
Okay, all right, great.
Thanks, Judy, and thank you for your service.
You're very welcome. My pleasure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Judy, thank you. I'm curious whether there's any conversation about small shuttle bus services that can provide sort of circular, let's say, like the 22, I think it was, that used to come around, just sort of a circle of Larkspur-Cortumadera for senior access to those facilities that you talked about, like the doctors' offices and things, but not a bus service that will be a long-distance commute type of service?
Are you asking me to find out about that?
Yeah, I just wonder if they talk about any of that.
They don't talk about that, but I think last time I was here, I reported on Catch-A-Ride. Do you, Catch-a...
I wasn't on it.
Okay, Catch-A-Ride is a low-cost cab service, and I think it's $8 for seniors. You have to call and make an appointment, and so that's the only low-cost service I know of in Marin. Whistlestop.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm thinking more of...
Just for our area.
Right, I was thinking more of sort of the route that would be a convenient transportation route for small trips around that seniors...
Maybe Marin Village would be able to...
It's an idea.
Hook that up. I just want to say one more thing. There used to be a phone number that seniors would call, 7-8-9-1-2-3-4, and it would be picked up by a service at the Commission on Aging, and now they have social workers that man the phones, and so it's wonderful because people can get service right away. And so that's a huge improvement. They're not talking to a machine or an answer service, so I forgot that, that was something I wanted to mention, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for the update, and, you know, if you have something, you know, feel free to contact us, or you can just, you know, send us an email or report out during open time, you know, anytime. You don't have to say, wait a year for your annual report or anything like that.
All right, and I'm going to check into a couple of issues that you talked about and get back to you.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Sure.
All right, next on the agenda, we have Superintendent Valerie Pitts and Board President Julia Ritter from the Larkspur-Cortumadera School District. I was reading off the agenda earlier, and I'm going, did they change their name? I think it was just like...
Because it said Larkspur-Cortumadera Unified.
Yeah, something like that, I think.
Just a small little change.
Yeah, that's what kind of got me to pause for a second there.
Unified school district, we are a union school district, Larkspur-Cortumadera Elementary School District, the Unified School District is K-12.
Can you bring your microphone down, please?
Yes. There you go, the last one there.
This one?
There you go, yes.
Thank you. I think this is okay, if I look up here. So what I'd like to do tonight is just give you an update on what major, what the progress with Measure D. It was the second bond that we passed in a two-bond facilities master plan, and Measure D is bringing us all our second phase of construction on the three schools of the district. So what I'd like to do is just go quickly through the three schools, focus a little bit on Hall since that's the school here in Larkspur, but to let you know that unlike the past three or four years, where we've only had one school at a time under construction during the summer, all three schools will be under construction this summer. So we're going to be having a very, very busy school summer. We are not starting school until September 9th, so we have one more year of late start. Hopefully, next year, we'll be back to starting before Labor Day, as nice as people thought that was for one year. Two years it got a little tiresome, and by the third, we were hearing, "When is school going to start? Please don't do this again." Those last two weeks are really hard on parents, so this will be the last year, hopefully for a while, that we have an after Labor Day beginning, and that is in order to give us as much time to complete the construction that we have planned over the summer. The reason we do that is to avoid having to bring in additional portables to house the children. If our construction were to go on during the school year, that would be a cost, and we decided we were going to try to get things done during the summer as much as possible. That said, at Neil Cummins, we have begun our Phase 2 over there. It began last week. We removed one of the old wings, the D Wing. We've completed the asbestos abatement on that site, and we'll be beginning to do groundwork, and we will be removing several of the old portables that line the back of that campus, so we're very excited about that. And this summer, a new six-classroom wing will be built at Neil Cummins. This slideshow is up on our website, and it basically gives you the timelines of things that will be happening just about every two weeks. We will also be posting updates on our website, so if neighbors of yours have any questions about what's going on, or they're complaining about noise or dust, there's also an email contact and a phone number contact at the end of this slideshow. Please, please have people that contact us if they see anything amiss, or if they have questions about what's coming up. So as I've said, we have begun the demolition process at Neil Cummins, and we've safely abated all the asbestos. It's a very careful process that we do. We have a hygienist on site and one that comes frequently during that time to make sure that everything is safe and that there's nothing in the air. We're doing utilities, underground, and earthwork, and a lot of heavy work at Neil Cummins will take place over the spring break, which is coming up very soon. Our working hours, unfortunately, are 7 to 6, Monday through Friday, and 9 to 5 on the weekends. That doesn't mean that you will, that we will actually be, you know, have construction happening on the weekends, but it does mean that if we need to, in order to get something done, that we will be doing that, so be prepared. We'll try to give you an hour to sleep in on the weekends. So Hall, Hall is getting the biggest part of construction this year, so we put off doing any modernization at Hall, save the windows, which we did a few years ago. Sorry about the tabbing there. Hall is being completely modernized this year, except for the wing that was built 10 years ago. We're not touching that because that's barely new. But what's known as the 300, 400, and 500 wing are all being modernized, taken down to the framing. So it may look like we're actually taking the whole school apart, but we're not, we're modernizing. And at the end of this slide, slideshow, there's a picture of what the classrooms will look like when we're through. We'll be recapturing the hallways and creating some small group breakout spaces in a little bit larger classrooms, connecting our classrooms together, and updating it to more of the types of classrooms that kids can be more active in, move around in, the 21st century learning skills, communication, collaboration, critical thinking, creativity. The way that we have designed our classrooms will promote that kind of collaboration and thinking for our kids, and that is involving a lot of work on the part of our teachers, so there's a lot going on right now over at Hall to prepare for what this new facility will bring to us next year. So we're really excited about that. I should let you know that the gymnasium will be cordoned off and will continue to be used over the summer by Larkspur Parks and Recreation, as has been. They've just been absolutely great, even though we've had minimal amounts of construction going on there. We work really closely with them to make sure that everybody stays safe, especially this summer when we have the major amount of work going on at Hall. So there are the timelines for you. We also have solar going in on all three school sites, so that's very exciting for us. We'll be up and running solar in the fall, and we're really proud of that. More information on what's going on over at Hall, weekend work is anticipated throughout the duration of that. Cove is only getting one more wing of four classrooms, and then that school site will be complete, anticipated to hold up to about 450, perhaps 460 students. Hall will be brought down to 500 students next year because the 4th grades currently at Neil Cummins and the Cove will roll up at those schools to be the 5th grade, so we'll no longer have the 5th grade at Hall Middle School next year. So we'll have a little bit more breathing room there. We're looking really forward to that. Okay, so this is what our new classrooms will look like, save, you won't have as many tables and chairs. This is a little overkill on the part of our furniture person. No, we're not ordering that much. There won't be any room for the children to move around, but you get the idea of, you know, the small group breakout spaces are now in what used to be our hallways, and then the classrooms on the other side will fit like a puzzle. They're small group breakout spaces, and all the classrooms will be interconnected, but also be able to shut themselves off and be soundproofed, et cetera, so that's just an, all three, save the science wing. The science wing will look a little bit differently. The science wing will have a center area between the five classrooms that are in that facility right now. All of the classrooms are being modernized, new science lab equipment will be coming in, and there will be a common room in the center instead of having the small group breakout rooms on the side. A little bit of rework to the back of Hall School, so there's a deck there right now, and that deck was put in probably eight years ago because the black top was very, very dangerous and being pushed up by the roots of the redwood trees. We've been able to expand, they're Monterey pines, they're not redwoods. We've been able to expand, give them eight more years of life, but there wasn't a way in the world that we could figure out how to do what we really needed to do on that site and remain ADA accessible, so those trees are coming down, unfortunately. They've been there a long time, they do provide much-needed shade, but it was, the deck that we built there was only temporary, and once we go in and do modernization as much as we're doing to Hall, we have to create a different solution. So there'll be work done on the back of the campus, not touching the field, although we're brainstorming about redoing that in the next couple of years, hopefully. Okay, are there any questions about anything that's going on in the district related to construction? Dan?
That's really a selfish question for the city, but are, and maybe Ann or Catherine or Dan could address this. Is there enough of an understanding of what the school district's doing in terms of modernization, especially in terms of there, any new improvements to learning that are taking place that we might apply to our community facility design process? Is there enough of a relationship between what they're doing and what we're doing so we can understand how we can optimize our design work? Or is it relevant?
We do have, Andrea Pierpont has attended your meetings recently, and I attended several of them, and we were, there was a lot of similar thinking going on.
So there's an, there's an understanding there?
I, from my point of view, I would ask Dan...
Great.
Is that what you perceive?
I'll just take that as a yes.
Yeah.
Great.
We're very excited, we're ready, willing to collaborate...
I just want to make sure that we're all kind of...
In any way that we can.
Elevating the conversation to the right place.
I think, I'd like to answer Dan's question, too, if that's okay, that, I mean, just looking at these drawings and just hearing this for the first time, it looks like they're really working to design flexibility into their spaces for the different learning activities that go on and the, what appears to be opportunities for small breakout sessions and other things, the way children learn and the way adults learn, and I know that that's really what I see in the community spaces that we're developing for the new library and community center, are this increasing flexibility to use the spaces in a variety of different ways, and also building in to the design, small breakout sort of areas, which sort of coordinates what I see here.
And we also, so this is an example of what the classrooms look like at the Cove and Neil Cummins. It's sometimes, well, it is a little bit more expensive when you don't build a square building, but we tried in a couple of places with our new classrooms to create nooks and crannies so that kids have, and different elevations of ceilings and things, because different things happen to the brain when you go from one sort of an environment into another, and so that's along the same lines as building in the small group breakout spaces.
Thank you. I just, I'm pleased to hear there's a sharing going on.
And Kevin is not here tonight, but the last time I was here, do you remember that he asked me what was going on with the other two districts that Larkspur, that are in Larkspur's boundary? So, I checked in, and I have an update for you from Kentfield. Kevin would know this. They passed a bond in November, $40 million bond. They've been busy gathering input on their facilities master plan. They will be unveiling the first draft of that facilities master plan next week at the Basage Community Center at 6:00, and Liz Schott assured me that Kevin had received an email about that. And then Larkspur Landing, which feeds Sanford City Schools, they're involved in facilities master plan. They have not run a bond, but they're trying to put together their enrollment projections and all of their needs right now in anticipation of having a bond on the ballot this November. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent?
Valerie, I'm not very familiar with the Cove School, but I know there was issues with flooding. Is there going to be any further mitigation of that in your construction plans?
Thank you. So the district has been undertaking quite an analysis, a forensic analysis of what happened, and the team has been putting together mitigation plans. We've been having those reviewed by an independent, objective third party. We've taken those to the town of Cortumadera, and we are in process of determining what exactly is going to be done with no impact on the taxpayers for that.
Okay. I just had one more thing. Are you keeping, are you planning to keep the entrance, the egress for traffic the same as, for instance, at Neil Cummins where parents or caretakers don't drop off anymore in front, but more in the neighborhood? Is that still going to continue in this plan, or are you changing any of sort of the routing of vehicles onto and off of the campus?
We redid that two years ago when we modernized the old buildings at Neil Cummins, so we redid some of the parking lot, and the decision to not allow parents in the loop actually really rests largely with administration. So while I would say now that there are no plans for allowing parents to drop their kids off in the loop, that could change.
Okay.
Great, thanks for the update.
Thank you for having me.
Looks like a lot going on for you guys, too.
There is one more slide in here that has my email and Wolf's phone number. He gets the calls, I get the emails, and this is up on our website.
So Valerie, who's the, who's the construction agency that you're using?
We use Greystone West for our construction management firm, and we use QKA Architects, Quokk Architects.
Great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll see you at the next FAP meeting.
Great.
All right, now we go on to our regular council business. We have our consent calendar tonight. I also see that in the audience tonight, we have two representatives from the Lark Theater. We have Ellie Mednick and Celeste Smelan, so if you have any questions for them, you know, they are here for that benefit. But we do have all the items on our consent calendar. Would anyone like to have anything pulled for discussion or any other comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve, and then, Dan, were you going to say something?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, well, thank you, Ann, and thank you for all the hard work you do at the Lark.
We so enjoy the Lark.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just a few items for you. First of all, you might have noticed there's one less person sitting at the table tonight, and that I took the role, so that's a new task for me. As we continue our transition to televised and recorded meetings, those of you who approved that item many, many moons ago, because it did take us a while to get to this point, will recall that you approved as part of that that we would transition to action minutes and eliminate the minutes taker so that the video themselves will become part of our incorporated minutes record. So that allows us to translate the savings from paying for all the minutes production over to the work on the video production, so. As part of that, I'll now take your role, and Cynthia Huespin will watch the video, and she'll prepare the action minutes from the video, and then, if you haven't seen, the videos are getting up the next day or on Friday at the latest, so my appreciation to the Media Center staff, because they're working really hard to get the video up right away so that folks who miss a meeting and want to see something can easily do that. And frankly, if you haven't taken a look, it looks really nice, actually, and very appreciated the Media Center for showing us that YouTube provides that service free of charge, so we're not paying to archive on YouTube. It's great. On your dais are three things I wanted to draw your attention to. One is your annual report from the Library Board, in which they sort of provide a summary along with your director, Frances Gordon, of the activity in the library for the year. It's been a very busy year, as you'll see, a little extra busy because we picked up a lot of activity when Cortumadera's library is closed, so we broke some records, I think, during certain months this year, but a nice summary of the activity that we've seen in the library and the hard work that's going on there. I also wanted to give you, we received copies from TAN, the Transportation Authority of Marin, and then also from Marin County Parks, their annual statements of what they're doing with their revenues that the public have approved. We're now working on our own because we have our first year to sort of finally report out what we've been doing with our C monies, and I wanted to share with you these two that came in. I think they're both nicely done, really present well, how those monies were spent out in the community. And then I wanted to conclude by highlighting that it's taken us a little while to find a rhythm in terms of doing some partnerships with the community for volunteer projects, but my thanks to Mary Grace Houlihan, your Public Works Director, and her staff, they've been working hard to put the right pieces in place, and we had a very significant step in that process on... On Saturday, we had the Redwood High School baseball team come out and help us to pull back some bark and other barrier, other materials, and then lay down weed blocker and put that all back. Not only does that save us the cost of having that work done, it'll save us a lot in man-hours going forward in terms of having to weed those areas. So, that was a great project for them to do, to help the community. It's a great project for us from an operational standpoint. So, a really nice thing. I know the mayor was out there, had a chance to thank everybody, and may have his own comments, but I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Yeah, just to follow on to that, Redwood baseball team had their varsity, junior varsity and freshman teams, in total, like fifty-eight players out there, and a couple of the coaches and several parents. So, they probably put in, you know, three-hour shifts, three different times, so they closed the two-hundred man-hours.
Hundred and twenty-five, or something like that.
Active, yeah, yeah, right. But, yeah, it was, it was well-attended. The weather was nice, and, you know, what we're going to do is recognize them with a proclamation on April 1st, if we actually have a meeting that day, and get a quorum. Otherwise, it'll be April 15th.
Actually, I, we will have a quorum. The three of you have confirmed that we will have a meeting on April 1st, so we'll try to keep it to non-controversial items so that we can reserve those for the 15th, yeah. But we will have a meeting on the 1st.
Okay. Did anyone else have any comments or questions for the city manager? I know...
I do, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan, can you give us an update on what's happening here on downtown Magnolia and also north Magnolia with the old bank?
I'll do the second one first. So, the bank has been purchased now and is in the process. The permit was pulled to put in a furniture store and some offices. So, you'll recall when it was an active bank, there were offices on the second floor and bank on the first floor, but it was all one operation. I think the new owner intends to sort of bifurcate some of that. There may be some secondary office space that's rented out, but the primary use is going to be a furniture store.
Do you know the name of the furniture?
I do not, no.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, are you referring to the Lark Creek?
And on down to Yankee Pier.
Well, that property zone has one property owner, and they have been doing their remodel by staying within the already-approved parameters of, for the whole property. So, the work you're seeing done has generally fallen within approvals that have existed on the property. They're not doing anything that they can't do much the way you might work on your house. They've had a couple of times, we've had to go, we are inspecting the work. There are a couple of times we've had to ask them to stop, and we've had discussions about what they're doing and what they're allowed to do without coming to the city for a permit process. You can see they have a plan to create more outdoor seating areas along Magnolia and some of the courtyard spaces that were there before.
So, it's not parking spaces? Those are...
Right.
Oh, great. All right.
I think they actually removed a couple parking spaces in the front area, which was permissible, because they, of course, have a lot of parking behind the property. We don't know yet what any new mix of tenants are. We haven't seen anything to confirm that, other than you've seen the sign that the Lark Creek Tavern property is going to be occupied by Perry's, which is out of San Francisco. Other than that, we don't yet know what the mix is. But our staff is in regular communication now with both the owners and the folks doing the work to make sure they stay within the bounds of what they're allowed to do.
So, I was informed there's a Pilates company interested or in a yoga studio? Do you know if that's...
I've heard those same statements, and I won't be surprised if they come to fruition, but we haven't seen permits to confirm for you that that's actually what's going to go in there. Those are probably coming, but those are types of businesses doing their due diligence and talking to the staff, which I always encourage folks, is a great opportunity to remind you, to remind your colleagues out in the community, before you ever sign a lease anywhere in Larkspur, come talk to the staff and make sure you're not going to run into any problems making your business successful in the space that you're attracted to, because sometimes there's compliance issues with putting your business into that space. And we can help you before you sign that lease to make sure you avoid those problems.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Kathy? Okay. Now's the time for council member reports and comments. Does anyone have anything they'd like to report out on? Go ahead, Councilmember Hillmer.
Last evening in San Anselmo, I attended the Ross Valley Flood Zone 9 Advisory Board meeting, where we had updates on the alternatives analysis being conducted by the consulting engineers on the criteria used to design and select locations for flood retention areas in the valley, as well as roughly thirty additional alternatives now being looked at as basically a new menu of choices that might come into play if feasibility becomes an issue with some of the major big-ticket retention projects that have been put forward to date. Most importantly, I just want to acknowledge the Flood Zone staff's expression of appreciation for working with our Public Works Director and our Public Works staff with respect to the flood issues and projects that are being thought through for the lower Ross Valley, Corder Madara Creek, and Kentfield, Greenbrier, and Larkspur. They have a lot of respect for Mary Grace, her creativity and her insight, and she's a valuable asset to this program. So, that was expressed last night publicly, and I just want to acknowledge that I took that into account and thank them for working together with the city, because I heard of no other community that had such a strong working relationship. So, I think that's a great value to us. Also, there were representatives from Larkspur's Park and Rec Commission, as well as the Hillview Neighborhood, and attended last night, affirming their concern over cost benefit and making sure that the property owners in Larkspur who are paying into the flood fee will see a benefit as soon as possible from the money being collected to put toward flood protection. So, that's my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Way?
Sure. In the last couple of weeks, I've gone to several things of meetings, which I think are, have some interesting information I'd love to share with you all and everyone else. Last week, the week before last, I went to the North Bay Business Journal meeting, which had a breakfast meeting in San Rafael. There were about two-hundred-and-fifty business leaders and members of the community there. Several of the things that came out, I thought, were really important. One of them was that they surveyed the business community for their number-one issue in Marin, and it was affordable housing for workers, which I think was something that we should all take to heart a little bit. They also had a panel of four CEOs present, and Carol LaValle, who runs Rustic Bakery, was one of them. And she talked about the opportunities to expand her business in Larkspur, and they're doing so well that now they've bought a bakery manufacturing big plant in Sonoma, and we're going to, and will be manufacturing a lot more product up there. But they're very committed to staying in Larkspur, so I was pleased to hear that. And lastly, Gavin Newsom spoke, and he was the keynote speaker and spoke pretty eloquently about growing up in the schools that Valerie just presented, which I thought was a very positive thing for us. Second thing that I'd like to have you know is that the Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Committee the other day, they reported on the neighborhood disaster exercise on March 8th, where five neighborhoods between Corder Madara and Larkspur participated in the full mourning of disaster response. So, there are fewer in Larkspur than in Corder Madara, but we're trying to get there. And there was an increase in planning for the first aid for disaster community members, and they're going to have several more of those this spring. And then, piggybacking on that, I went to the DC3, the Disaster Citizen Core Council, which is quarterly. And just two things that came out of there that I'm going to follow up on for us was they did a big meeting between all of the Public Work Services and all the department heads of the county and Napa County to really do a discussion of how the Napa earthquake affected the towns. And I've asked Tom Jordan to give me the report on how the historic downtown of Napa and the historic downtown of Napa buildings fared, so we can sort of try to understand that for our historic downtown. And Gary Lyons also spoke about the getting ready to present the Business Disaster Resiliency Program that they're going to roll out, which I thought you'd find important to do that. And then, lastly, I went to Heritage, and I was very pleased that they approved permits for renovation for two of our classic structures. One, the Laurel, yellow Laurel House, which has a hundred percent historic rating, and the owners had asked for a very modest change to some things, and that was approved. And also, the Honeymoon House Cottage down here in Madrone, which is one of the oldest structures, a nineteen-oh-six building, and a young family's bought that, and the Heritage Committee approved what they are interested in doing to renovate. So, I thought that was a very nice change. So, thanks.
Thank you. And one other item on the emergency preparedness, the North Bay Division of League California Cities meeting for April is going to be in Napa, and they're going to talk about lessons learned. So, if you don't have that email, I'll forward it to you. Okay. Great. Councilmember Morrison?
I do. I attended the Community Development Block Grant, which we are considering the lower Ross Valley project funding. And as we all know, the federal grant continues to decline sadly. Our allocation amount was a million-two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, shared between six planning areas, and we gave funds to rehabilitation loan program. They asked for forty-five thousand. We gave twenty-eight thousand. We also gave funds to the Family Law Legal Services. They asked for seven. We're able to give them five-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy. We also funded the Marin Brain Injury Network Services. They asked for seven thousand. We're able to give them four thousand. And then, the last was our Senior Access Scholarship. They asked for sixty-two hundred, and we're able to give them fifty-two hundred. And I also attended the TAM, Marin County Liaisons for Safe Routes to School, which is for the elementary and middle schools. We talked about Cove, Neil Cummins, and Hall. They have, out of all the schools, the highest percentage of kids walking, biking, and busing, which is pretty exciting, and especially on Green Wednesday, that is the highest, because they get a green ribbon for staying out of a car. Larkspur-Corder Madara schools have a safe, good-conditions path, so that assists us with the bikes and the pedestrians. The safe routes to school, they also have bike donations, so a lot of local bike stores, they're rehabilitating the bikes, so that's, that's good to hear. They also have a website. They map all of the bikes and pedestrians' routes for all the schools in Marin County. And they also have a new system now called a School Pull Marin.org. You can go and sign up for carpooling. Ask neighbors if they're interested to carpool with you. So, that's, hopefully, that's going to be a success. I was surprised to find out that Redwood High School does not, is not part of the Safe Routes to School. So, I made a phone call to Joe Stewart, who will like to work with me and volunteer to coordinate Safe Routes to School program at Redwood. So, hopefully, we'll start that. Thank you.
Did you call TAS, too?
I will also call TAS.
Yeah, I think she's pretty much given up at Redwood, so if you're trying to get that started, I'm sure she'll be willing to help you out.
Good. Thank you.
Last couple of weeks, if it seemed like I was off the grid, it's because I've spent almost all my time with the Twin Cities Coalition for Healthy Youth. We've been really busy the last couple of weeks. We had one event that was organized by actually a student, and it was an event at Twin Cities, or not Twin Cities, the Corder Madara Rec Center, and they had a movie night. They brought in food from Soul Food and had a bunch of games and then watched a movie. And it was just one of the events that the Coalition tries to encourage youth to get involved in, where they can plan something, where they can spend the Friday or Saturday evening and not, you know, have fun without drinking alcohol. The other thing was that there was another parent ed session that was done at Redwood High, and this time, the invitations were extended not just to Twin Cities residents, but also to the areas where other cities feed their students into Redwood High, and there were about three-hundred-and-fifty parents that showed up for that. So, each one of these sessions is getting more and more people. As a result of it, what we did do in the last couple of weeks is that we applied for a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant with the Drug-Free Coalition, I believe it's called, but it's a federal grant. The most that we've ever gotten is sixty thousand a year from the county of Marin, and we got fifty thousand this year. And if we get a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand for next year, that'll be a big boost in terms of what we can do, especially, you know, broadening our reach to, you know, other cities just beyond the Twin Cities and working with adjacent coalitions. So, that's been really exciting, and be able to report back more in another quarter. So, at this point, I was going to say, we don't have much of an audience. If central Marin police would like to go back on duty, you know, they're welcome to stay, but don't feel obligated to. Thank you for coming, though, tonight. What we have next on our agenda are, actually, we still have a member of the public, so next on the agenda is the public comment period. So, this is the time when a member of the audience can address the council on a matter that's within our jurisdiction, but not on our agenda tonight. So, would you like to address the council on anything? No? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Tonight, there are two public hearing items. The first of the two is an ordinance to prohibit the excavation of newly paved streets, and we have our Public Works Director, Mary Grace Houlihan, to report on that, or will city manager...
Just, before I hand it over to Mary Grace, I just wanted to note, we're going to ask you to waive the first reading of the ordinance this evening, but we'll move the passing of the resolution to your April 1st meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation for this item, but we've chatted about bringing this forward for quite some time. And this is a new trench cut ordinance that basically puts in a five-year moratorium for our newly paved streets. We all recognize there are times when the pavement still has to be cut regardless of the fact that we've recently paved it. This ordinance allows for how we can ensure that if it is cut, it is properly restored or we are compensated for the loss of pavement life, so to say, and help us keep perpetuating the safety and reliability of our newly paved streets. So, this is, this was one of our goals in trying to move forward with improving the safety of the Larkspur streets, and so we're anxious to get this in place.
Does anyone have any questions? Yes, we'll start with Councilmember Hillmer.
So, Mary Grace, how would that work then for, for instance, undergrounding of utilities if PG&E gets the funds and wants to underground Doherty?
So, we will be undergrounding Doherty.
I know. That's what I'm hoping for.
The, the undergrounding of Doherty is actually going to happen outside of the pavement, but let's say that we do have a utility situation where someone wants to come in and cut the pavement. First of all, we are trying to reach out to all utilities before we're paving the street, so they are coming in and doing work in advance. MMWD, for example, is going to be coming in in the next couple of months to do work on Madrone, in anticipation that we'll be coming in and doing paving in Madrone. We've reached out to RVSD and PG&E the same way. But the lines under the streets are, we have pressure lines, you have water lines which are under pressure, you have gas lines under pressure, you periodically have to go in. What the ordinance has, is doing is we are actually adopting a modification to the county trench section. What we've been learning over the last several years, particularly in California, but throughout the country, is through a lot of studies, that the actual excavation of a trench impacts the pavement much more substantially than four-foot width, which has historically been identified as a trench... identified as a trench repair. Um, Marin County standards already identify that if the edge of the trench is within four feet of the edge of pavement, or the lip of gutter, that the restoration needs to extend all the way to that edge of pavement or lip of gutter. That's a practical element, is that if you can imagine just the size of equipment you need to go in and do pavement work, if you have a narrow area less than four feet, you really can't remediate it without tearing out what was already done. Um, we are modifying our section to identify that if it's four feet from the actual edge of the trench repair, that they have to go the whole way. We're also identifying that if they cut into our newer pavement, there are a number of measures that they may have to take. So if they're going longitudinal along the street, they may have to do a larger swath, like a half-street width or what have you, to do a repair, so that our street will remain competent. Just to kind of give you an idea is, if you go and cut the street nine times, for example, you reduce the life more than half of the life of the street, just the actual cutting of the street because water and, um, differential settlements of the pavement. My pavement guru over here will correct me if I'm misspeaking in any way. But, uh, um, you know, the, the, the impacts of when you cut it, it, it just affects the structural workings of the pavement. So, um, you'll see in the proposed ordinance, a number of items, and it also has some requirements that whatever repair is being proposed actually has to go through the Public Works Department and the city engineer to confirm that it's acceptable. Uh, I'll tell you, to date, we've been having wonderful coordination, like with RVSD and MMWD to, as they go in and do their work, that they'll work with us to give us monies that would've gone towards the repairs, and then we can apply that with city monies to get a full street repair rather than just a simple trench, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Hilmer?
Uh, how will the, right now, when, when a private property owner, uh, has an improvement project, there's a trigger where they're required to underground utilities to the nearest pole. Uh, if, if that were to happen along a newly paved street, what, what new impact, what new, um, what new impacts might that put upon the private property owner, or what new, uh, burden?
So, in the ordinance, what we've identified is that if, if there is a new lateral or what have you that needs to go in, um, they do a lot of, through what we call a directional bore, where they can do a smaller, what we call bell hole, typically about a four-by-four cut in the street, and then they'll do a directional underground to get the conduit in. We've identified a five-hundred-dollar, um, fee, so that the private property owner or small user, even, even PG&E coming in for a small repair, isn't gonna have to bring in a large pavement crew to come and re-pave a whole swath of the street. So it compensates us for dollars that can go to the loss of life of, of the pavement by actually cutting it, but it's not such a large imposition that they're gonna be spending thousands of dollars to bring a pavement crew to repave a forty-foot width of the street or something.
So the, the five-hundred dollars you mentioned covers?
It'll cover us coming in and sealing that cut maybe in a few years or something of that sort, so that it can perpetuate the life. It helps us, the whole point is to maintain the integrity and protect the life of the street.
But the private property owner doesn't have to bring in a paving contractor?
They'll just do the tip, what they have historically been doing, of coming in and doing a trench repair, that's per the county standard. Ours is slightly different in that we are asking them to go the full depth of asphalt rather than just two inches.
So they actually do have to do the patch?
They've always had to do the patch.
And the five-hundred dollars?
Yeah, that's, they've always had to do the patch.
And if, and if nine property owners, just by coincidence, on one newly paved street are doing projects that trigger that, how does that play into your caution earlier?
Of the nine cuts? It's, it's a higher maintenance element, so.
I'm just trying to think what this means. Thank you.
Here, Councilmember Morrison?
What other cities have this ordinance? Are we the?
So San Onofre has, has a trench cut, many, many cities do, I can't list all the ones in Marin.
No, just in Marin, oh.
But I, I do know San Onofre has one. Um, theirs, theirs is a little simpler, they have a little bit more, they just leave a little bit more latitude, that, uh, to the city engineer, it's, it's a simpler statement that just says, um, "You won't cut our streets for five years."
In what five years?
That's, that's the typical, that has been identified in a number of pavement reports, is to protect it for that first five. After that, you're gonna be implementing some kind of maintenance treatment to the street already, so. We still, even though it's, it's no cut for five years, um, there still are requirements for what has to be done afterwards. So we still have the enhanced repair, they still follow the county standard and our now modified standard, if this is adopted, uh, to make sure we're not leaving little gaps between the edge of pavement and the edge of gutter. So we'll eliminate some of the patchworking of what's going through streets.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is a public hearing item, and I see one of our firefighters came in. Would you like to, uh, make any comments or ask any questions on this item?
I don't think so. I think it's, you know, obviously, we see a lot of the disrepair and repair, and, uh, especially up on V C S, uh, the new repair to the pavement. It's very noticeable and, uh, it's nice riding on, personally, in a fire. And it helps save fire as well. Dires, like, everybody else is farther, but, uh, good, Matt, no further.
Okay, good, thank you. Yes?
One, one last question, sorry to, sorry for my brain activity. I, uh, the, the use of the, of the mechanism of a moratorium, uh, when, what my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, is that many of the same activities that are currently taking place will continue to take place, but with a, a better set of standards and a better oversight because of the way we've structured this. Am I wrong?
Uh, and, that is, that is true for the majority of it. The other part it does is it really helps us with working with the utilities to encourage them to better plan, so that they aren't just haphazardly coming into our streets. The utilities are our biggest challenge.
So explain to me, the appropriate staff, why the moratorium, instead of just a stronger, uh, ordinance or a stronger set of regulations? Is, is the moratorium an essential trigger here for us to assert our authority to, for the oversight and the stronger policy?
It, when you put in the moratorium, um, then, like at PG&E, for their planned projects, which aren't emergency, they'll, they'll work with you so that they're not...
It makes them come to us. Got it.
Yeah, and we, we reach out to them in advance, so, um, you know, I, I've reached out to PG&E, to MMWD, to RVSD, to AT&T, that here's what we are potentially looking at, and the areas we're looking at going into, so that they can...
And, and the city's, uh, confident that we need to use this mechanism in order to achieve our objectives? The moratorium?
I'm confident, based on the numerous studies that have been done throughout the state and published through the American Public Works Association and, um, the, I've been to many seminars, listening to the other public works directors of how this really is a helpful tool to control the damage to your streets.
And in your, your opinion, or other, the city manager, the city attorney, there's no other way to achieve this other than the use of a moratorium?
In my opinion, yes, that's correct.
No other way?
I don't, I don't, I don't see another way that's, that's beneficial.
The reason I'm asking this is I, I don't take the use of a moratorium lightly. It's something that's usually a, a, a significant action for us to be taking.
It is a significant action, and we've tried to accommodate the situations that would be difficult for either a resident or a business, or, um, an emergency situation. It allows us those more stringent conditions to apply, so that our streets can stay more competent.
Thank you for the information.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll close the public hearing portion right now and, uh, bring it back to council. As, as, uh, City Manager stated, we're gonna, uh, he's suggesting that we waive the first reading of Ordinance 1001, but, um, defer the passage of Resolution 1815 until the, uh, April first meeting. So, um, would anyone like to, uh, discuss this item any further? And if not, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
With motion and second?
I'll second it.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that, just to be clear, that's minus the resolution?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Just, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, he beat me to it, so we're good. All right. Uh, second public hearing item tonight is, uh, first reading of Ordinance 1002, and that is a, uh, minor modification of the Social Host Accountability Ordinance, and City Manager Dan Swartz will report out on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. From time to time, when we had the Twin Cities Police Authority, the, uh, two member agencies, Larkspur and Cordero, would review elements of their code and try to make sure that they, uh, were reconciled as closely as possible, so it'd be easier for the police authority to administer the rules. It's easier for them when the jurisdictions have the same, uh, ordinances in place, because they don't have to stop and consider where they are and whether there are differences. When San Onofre joined the authority and it reconstituted itself as Central Marin Police Authority, uh, we asked the command staff to review the various code elements and identify ones that the three jurisdictions should consider. The one that was at the top of the list was the Social Host Ordinance, uh, and a desire on the part of the chief in particular to have the three jurisdictions have the same, uh, ordinance. So, uh, given that, he received direction and support from the Management Committee of Central and Police Authority, and then subsequently, the Police Council of the Authority to, uh, invest the resources to propose a uniform Social Host Ordinance for the three communities. Cordero took up this matter, actually, a couple of months ago, and adopted the ordinance that's before you. As you're aware, San Onofre took up, uh, the ordinance and had some pretty healthy debate about it. Um, and ultimately, I think, will have adopted an ordinance that reflects substantively what you see here. There's a few nuances that they've adopted that I think the command staff feels won't affect in terms of the general administration. Um, and so, uh, we're comfortable having vetted, uh, the proposed changes to our existing Social Host Ordinance. We think the Host Ordinance has more than proven itself as an effective tool in curbing this behavior. Uh, and in fact, uh, the mayor and, uh, Bob Rivasio on the Cordero Council, uh, gave a nice presentation at the last, uh, MCCMC event, and noted that in some respects, it's too effective in that we haven't really eliminated parties, we've just pushed them out of our jurisdiction. Uh, so that's good for us and maybe not ultimately the solution yet for Marin. Um, although maybe if every community adopts one of these ordinances and they read the same, we'll send the parties to another county and they can solve the problem. Um, but I'm here tonight to present this to you on behalf of, uh, both your staff and the Central Marin staff, and we'd ask that you, uh, adopt this ordinance, waive the first reading tonight to adopt this ordinance, and adopt the associated resolution, and then we'll bring it back for final adoption.
Okay, uh, let me give the council real brief background on some of the changes also. San Onofre was the only city in Marin that didn't have truly a Social Host Ordinance, so that was the opportunity with the consolidation of police to, uh, bring them in line with the same ordinance that we have, and also get, you know, full Social Host Ordinance. They had more of a, what we were characterizing as a party ordinance, which is, uh, they would respond to complaints. And it didn't place the responsibility of the parties involving youth on, on the parents. Uh, the, one thing that we had found out through a number of appeals was that when juveniles appeal a Social Host Ordinance, uh, those meetings became public. So all their information, which is normally kept confidential, uh, by state law, it was now being released to the public. So now you have more of an administrative appeal, and only if a parent requests a public hearing will they be granted one, so this keeps the information private. Uh, the third thing was that, uh, the schools resource officer was finding out that it was too difficult to administer certain types of non-monetary penalties, uh, which were primarily in the form of, uh, uh, community service. So we provided more latitude for them to, uh, provide community service outside of, uh, organizations that were directly tied or had a nexus to alcohol or, or drug use. So, uh, if you have any questions, uh, for City Manager or myself, uh, yes, go ahead.
I did only want to note that, uh, the chief has assured the police council that his, uh, his hearing will be far scarier than the police council's hearings have ever been, so, uh, that, I, I actually believe him too, so.
Well, that's my question, who is the hearing officer?
It's the chief or his designee.
And when do they hold that? Do they...
Well, they would, they would schedule a hearing and hold it in some chambers over at the Police Authority Building.
Okay, hmm, schools must be happy about this.
Well, uh, schools are looking for tools to deal with the issue themselves. Um, I think if you look back to two thousand nine, two thousand ten, in what they call the California Healthy Kids Survey, at that point, uh, it was polled that forty-three percent of the eleventh graders at Redwood had, had one binge drinking incident in the last thirty days. That's five drinks or more in a two-hour period. In the more recent report, it, I believe it's gone down to like about thirty-seven percent. So there, there's been a big improvement. We don't know if, it's only because you have, you know, all the parent education and, and all, all the Social Host ordinances and, or a combination of everything, but, you know, hopefully something is working.
I have one more.
Yes, go ahead.
So I was also confused about the notice of violation shall be conspicuously posted at the property, which is a subject of the notice of violation. Can you explain that?
They, they do post a notice at the house where the party took place. Um, one of the reasons they, they go through that is, uh, you know, Social Host Ordinance is attempting to, uh, have something punitive occur for the property owner as well. So, and a lot of times, the, the responsible parent or property owner is not present when the citation's issued. So posting the notice is in part a process to ensure the due process of notice does occur to the party that ultimately...
And where do you, where do you put it?
It's, they usually post it on the door or, uh, on a post, on a porch.
It has to stay there for ten days?
There's, it's supposed to be left up for ten days.
Okay, hmm, interesting.
Okay, at this point, I'll open up, yes, go ahead.
Uh, I know the county has a similar Social Host Ordinance for the unincorporated area. So how, how well does this coordinate the Central Marin Police with Kentfield, the area of, the Social Host Ordinance that would apply to the jurisdiction that's right in between our two jurisdictions? So between Larkspur and San Onofre is Kentfield and Kent Woodlands, which would be county. I just wonder how, leaping over to, uh, an ordinance that applies to San Onofre, what the coordination is between that area in between there? Or do we know?
Uh, my only comment that I can offer from talking to the chief is ours is actually, I think, a little bit stronger than the county's, gives him a little, and his staff, a little more authority, uh, on scene, and, uh, but generally, they conform fairly well. I think the concern is the cities that don't have any ordinance, they're the ones that it's becoming evident that the kids are figuring out they can go to those communities and not have the same repercussions.
Does Ross have a social?
Yeah, actually, all the communities now have one, if San Onofre adopts it, it's just that we're not getting consistent enforcement. So that's one of the things that Chief Cusamano has been trying to address with the police chief. Chiefs Association. And our coalition is also working with the Ross Valley Coalition specifically to speak with Ross. You know, the new chief there has been very amenable to those conversations and understands the problem, so we're gonna be getting support from them. What was really humorous was finding out that, you know, we heard of a party where the kids knew all about the social host ordinance. What they did was they were collecting five dollars at the door to pay for the fine. So, you know, they're, they're gonna find a way to get around these things. You know, but yes, we are seeing the parties move outside of, yeah, the Twin Cities because of the zero tolerance policy we've taken in the Twin Cities, so hopefully, our surrounding communities, especially the ones that also feed into Redwood, will take the same action. But this is a public hearing item. I'll open it up to our member of the public if you'd like to make a comment or have a question on this item. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna close the public comment period, and, public comment's part of the public hearing, and Councilmember Hilmer, do you have anything?
Could I get clarity on the motion desired this evening? The staff report, I, I heard the City Manager, but the staff report asks for direction.
The, the staff report also mentions that, that it, it, it says two different things. At the beginning, it says direction, but there is also a statement that the, that the recommendation is to introduce and waive further reading of the ordinance, and also there's not a resolution attached with this item, it's just, it's just ordinance 1002.
Ready to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, please do so.
I, I'll move that we introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance 1002.
Okay, we have a motion, and do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, just as an added addendum to that, you know, as a representative of the coalition, you know, we, we have had several discussions with Schools Resource Officer and also the Central Marin Police. You know, this is a big step in moving it forward. The recommendations that they would like to make also is to possibly extend this at some point to cover all banned substances and not just alcohol. Okay, so that takes care of all our public hearing items for tonight. We now move on to the business items. First business item we have is a pavement update for the upcoming fiscal year of 2015-16, and we have our Public Works Director, Mary Grace Houlihan.
Hello again. I am happy to bring our pavement update for Larkspur, and I have with me tonight Joe Ryrie from Pavement Engineering. I'm going to actually let Joe do a good deal of chatting, as he is our pavement expert and has been heavily involved in assisting us through our fiscal year 13, 14, and 14, 15 projects, which have helped improve our safety of our Larkspur roads. So, our presentation goals tonight are just to go, little bit of history, where, where have we been? Where are we now? And where are we heading? So we've done some analysis, lot of, of looking at options. We've received a grant for some rubberized pavement that will help us make some great improvements through the city, and in looking at the various opportunities for what we can do, and how much improvement we can make in as short amount of time as possible. We have all these projections in, in this presentation tonight. So, Joe, I'm going to introduce you and let you kind of move forward.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mary Grace. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, it's great to be with you. Tonight's presentation's gonna be really a happy one, and so listen carefully to some of the good news that, that we're gonna be sharing. So first of all, where have we been? The, the, here's just some summary of, of the city, probably the most important thing that stands out is the PCI, which is a measurement of the pavement condition index, has been a thirty-nine, as reported in 2013, and then right near the end, then again in 2014. That put us in the annual MTC report that comes out for the condition of pavements reported throughout the hundred and nine agencies that they represent, down at the bottom. And we're gonna be talking about, the most recent report has also just been unveiled in a, in a meeting at MTC and should be going public. Has that been published yet? That, okay, so we'll be talking about that, too, but I just want you to hold on for what that information's gonna tell you. And so just in terms of where we've been, we implemented both a, a critical PCI management approach blended together with a worst-first approach in terms of street selection, and trying to use the limited funding that was, that we had available to try and make improvements and, and raise the PCI. We focused mainly on the arterial and collector streets, your most critical streets, so that they carried the, the highest volume, but also, we needed to look at some of the other areas throughout town to be able to basically just kind of cover all the important streets, anything that we could. We were looking at the worst-first, and you're gonna hear also that what we were doing is balancing with, with the approach that Mary Grace mentioned in terms of the utility companies. If they were making cuts in the road, then we were able to take funds from those streets to be able to, to work on projects, so then that moved those streets around in the priority So let's talk a lot about what we were looking for in terms of strategies were implemented. We talked about the construction vehicle impact fee is now in place, you've got the garbage truck fee is now in place, and then you're looking at the impact fees. Did I miss, did I go by the one section? Here's more strategies that we were trying to, to use in terms of trying to get more from our dollars. Do you have a copy of this, or is it important for me to read each and every word up there? Okay, the trench cutting ordinance, if I could just weigh in just a moment on that, I know that you're gonna be considering that and discussing it further. It is a, the moratorium is, is common, I see it throughout the state for the agencies that we deal with. From one aspect, there's nothing more embarrassing than just paving a street and then having someone come in and cut it. And it's like, what, no one was coordinating anything here, and so all the questions that come up. But it actually provides some teeth in the whole management part of it, so that you can work with the utilities and say, listen, this is what we need to do. They're usually the biggest culprit of, of coming in and cutting wherever they want, whenever they want. This forces them to be more organized and work closely with the city to be able to, to accomplish what they need to accomplish to maintain the utility system, which we depend on, but also preserve the integrity of the street system. One cut in the road is, is, depending on what study you look at, can reduce the pavement life from about fifteen percent to as much as forty percent. And so it's, you start taking that into account, and it really does decrease your pavement life. Okay, so where are we now? This is, you're seeing intermixed in here pictures of paving projects that have just been completed, and so those are...
(inaudible).
Oh, yeah, yeah, in, right here. I thought that was assumed. Okay, so pave, streets that have been paved since, since 2013, when, when the last ratings were, were put together. You can see what was paved in the fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, and also our completed project streets from the fourteen, fifteen-year project, which are all completed now, which included Villa Casitas and, and also El Portal, as well as some other streets up in your, what I call the hill area, which are some really fun streets, Amador, I mean Ardmore and Willshire, and, and those streets up in there. I would say that since 2013, pay attention to the upper corner here, that represents thirteen percent of your street system has now been touched with some kind of an improvement to your street system. The city of Larkspur, right now, is what's gonna be reported by MTC, is a forty-two. So we've come up from the reported thirty-nine up to a forty-two. That's a pretty significant jump. When you think about pavements deteriorate on a curve that drops off really steep at the lower end, you're fighting really hard to come up that, that very steep curve. And so we've made some really significant improvements, and the kind of things that we should pat ourselves on the back on. As reported at MTC, it was both good news and bad news. We're still gonna show up down at the bottom of the list, Larkspur is, but you've been, you're gonna be recognized as in the most improved category. And so that's a, that's a significant point, and something that everybody should be proud about.
We actually have five points that we came up, because thirty-nine would have declined to a thirty-seven. So MTC actually has asked Joe and I to come and speak, as to... We've been asked to come and speak, because to overcome a five points in one year is, is really substantial. So I really thank you for helping us make that happen and supporting Measure C and making the hard decisions to implement the vehicle impact fees, his, those dollars, really, we are trying, and with Joe's help, we're trying to stretch them as far as we can, and it's showing, we are seeing a difference. So I know we're still, we're still at the bottom, and it's killing me, but we're gonna get there. And it is a substantial difference. The other thing that, I attended the MTC local roads meeting the other day, and something to really keep in mind is that a lot of the PCIs that are showing in many of the cities as, as better than us are happening because they're, they're still deferring their, their real capital work, and they're doing very low-cost maintenance efforts, like a slurry seal that really doesn't fix the pavement. And there were directors and engineers from cities and counties all over the Bay Area who were expressing they're doing this and their PCI is showing higher, but their deferred capital improvement is growing exponentially, and they're very, very concerned about it. So the methods that we're going through here in Larkspur are really true repairs, true, true rejuvenation of our pavement to really get the life and the safety increase, so I appreciate Joe's help in coming up with the different methods for what we're doing. So it, that's, that's an exciting thing, so.
Yeah, we're, we're not just masking the problem by just putting slurry all over it, it's, the conditions, the repairs are going to last, and so it's, it's exciting to see. So it's, it's something to be really proud of.
Just to clarify, when you, when you talk about slurry seal, you're talking about a fraction of an inch?
Oh, yes, very much.
Just to be clear for the public, that's watching.
Right. Yeah, it's just oil with, with some rock mixed in it, and it's, it's about an eighth of an inch thick is what's going over the top. It will, it will fill cracks for just a little while, like, short-term, a few months, and will help improve the ride slightly, but it won't be long before all of those cracks come right back through again.
And you're reporting to us that our improvements have more substance than that?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay, so this goes back to one of the first presentations that we made, where we talked about the projection and what we can anticipate seeing, depending on the different funding levels that would be available, and the fact that we're already reporting a forty-two, we should be somewhere around a forty right now. And so we're, the intent of this was saying, hey, we're even ahead of the curve of what the projections are, and so the strategies that we're implementing, what we're trying to do are, are improving faster, so we're hoping that those tires grab quickly and we can climb up even more as we go forward. So here's some different dollars that have been allocated. Did you want to speak to this one, Mary Grace?
So the commitment we made to the citizens of Larkspur and was supported by the Citizen Oversight Committee and Council was that Measure C dollars would focus on the residential roads. The, that meant not the arterials, not the Doherty and Magnolias, but we were gonna try and get into the neighborhoods. And that is what we have done. Every dollar of the Measure C dollars has gone to roads within neighborhoods. So this demonstrates just kind of the, how, how the funds have been distributed. We, the Larkspur Landing Circle Project really was a fiscal year thirteen, fourteen project, but because of weather and bid environment, it got pushed out and happened a little later than, than the fiscal year thirteen, fourteen. That was from vehicle impact fees that were over a couple of years. The Villa Casitas, El Portal, Villa Hulan, Villa Larita, Alisio, Ardmore, Marina Vista Streets, all received Measure C dollars. So, we felt that was important, I'm very committed to that and very cognizant of that in speaking with residents and in looking at what we're doing with the dollars and trying to keep that commitment to the citizens of Larkspur and what they, what they are expecting through Measure C.
I need to go back one slide on that. This, this hundred and forty-two, hundred and forty-three thousand dollars rounded up from the funding from utilities, that's Mary Grace working closely with the utility companies, and if they're gonna be doing, cutting in the streets, she's saying, okay, well, just take it to this point, we'll come in and you give us the rest of the money that you'd use for the rest of the trench repair, and we'll, we'll stretch that into our, our dollars and, and get more out of it. And so that's, that's a significant portion, or an important portion of, of, again, extending the dollars and being creative with what funding is available. So where are we going? We're going to continue to implement best management practices so that the, we get the most out of the pavement. That includes not just selecting the right streets, but once the streets are selected, really getting in and doing good value engineering to get, to explore the different options. For instance, with El Portal and Villa Casitas, for those who were paying attention, that, that used a treatment referred to as full-depth reclamation, where we were able to blend together the existing asphalt and recycle what was there with the base and the native material, and mix in lime and cement treatments that, that stabilize and strengthen the underlying poor soils in that area, and, and then gave a nice solid foundation for the pavement that was going on. It reduced the pavement thickness that was required, which is the most expensive part of it, and strengthened the underlying section. And so that's why we feel confident that you're gonna get really good life out of those roads. And other treatments were explored. Up on the Ardmore and, and Villa Marina, we used a leveling course up there to help not only improve the ride, but also address some of the other issues that were done, and it's a good value engineering technique to get good, strong and better, or higher compaction.
You're, you're referring to Marina Vista, I think.
I'm sorry, you're right, Marina Vista.
I, I mentioned that, it's significant, because it's one of the most difficult access roads, especially for public safety. So it's a very valuable improvement.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's, it's really fun to drive on now, too. So we're gonna continue to try and, and apply the tried and true, doing the right treatment... So we're going to continue to try and apply the tried and true, doing the right treatment at the right time to the right pavement, and use the right materials. We're going to focus on the implementing, whether it's top-down or bottom-up, or best-first, worst-first, and we're really trying to move the city into more of a critical PCI management mode. The problem is, is we have so many streets that are in poor condition that we can't ignore those. And critical PCI management would tell us to ignore them, but we can't. And so we need to implement and sprinkle those in, and work those into the equation overall in terms of what we can do and the street selections. And again, just as a reminder, and for the public who are watching, am I going to be good? Critical PCI management is really trying to catch those streets before they drop into the next treatment category and end up costing more money. And so if you can catch the streets here, here, and here, then you're going to extend their life at lower cost. And so that's the critical PCI management approach, as well as just selecting what streets are the worst that we all seem to notice a lot. And so for fifteen and sixteen, these are the streets that we're proposing, that we work on.
So RVSD, we've all been very aware of their construction going on this last several months, and for the next few months. Their trenches are going haphazard through Larkspur Plaza Drive. They're going to be tearing up Dartmouth. They're tearing up portions of Magnolia. And rather than have them go back with just a trench, which Larkspur Plaza Drive is in dire need of pavement for the whole entire street width, what they're doing is just putting the bare minimum in at this time, and then they are giving us the dollars for what it would have been to pave half the road, because the way their trench goes haphazard through the road, they'd be within that four feet of the edge, and wheel lines and things of this sort, which isn't safe. So they're giving us those dollars. We will couple them in with city dollars and be able to pave the whole road. The benefit is that when we go in with a pavement project, we get a better cost per ton, and it's more efficient to do a larger swath in the whole street width, rather than have them just do a portion. So it does save them money, and it helps get us to a fully rehabilitated road. So there are sections of Magnolia that they will be opening up, and there is Dartmouth and Larkspur Plaza Drive. And then the other street that, you'll notice on here also, that Cal Recycle Grant, that is what I mentioned earlier, of the rubberized pavement grant, so we will be applying dollars from the Cal Recycle Grant to these pavement remediations. So this is something PEI worked with me on, applying for this grant and identifying what kind of pavement restoration work could be done on these various streets, and where we could apply these dollars. So that's going to help us with stretching our dollars farther. The next section we were looking at is Madrone. This is a neighborhood that we haven't touched yet as far as pavement rehabilitation, and working on this first section, Madrone, is going to be beneficial there, and is in dire need. That's a little bit of a challenging area. We, MMWD is working with us, and they are going to go in and replace their water line through this first section. They will compensate for the differential of what it would have been for them to do the full trench width again, so we will get some dollars from there. And we've met with an arborist already to look through and make sure that as we do the pavement rehabilitation through that corridor, we're not going to damage the redwoods. So that's a cool thing. We also looked at what streets are hitting that point of, we really need to go in and do something, the worst-first, that if we don't, we're becoming an unsafe situation. So Bertana Way, a section of that, North Almanor, which is a cul-de-sac, those are both streets we're recommending for this fifteen, sixteen project. And then we also, in order to keep our arterials going, we're doing some crack sealing through, to protect those. And crack sealing is, we basically go in and seal the cracks, keep water from getting in there, destroying the subgrade of the pavement, and causing it to fail.
Now that, what I've noticed on, bringing this closer to home, what I've noticed on my street this winter is that two springs that have allegedly come up under the road surface, bubbling up, destroying the pavement. And I'm wondering, how common is that in Larkspur? That springs sort of spontaneously appear? And whether there's ways to anticipate them and mitigate them before we pave?
So I've had many discussions with MMWD on this, because there's a source of water coming from somewhere. I think Joe can speak to this as well, but a spring on its own is not going to cause the pavement to bubble up and fail. A number of things have to happen. Either it needs to be under pressure in some way, coming from some pressurized system, or there needs to already be a fissure or failure going on in the pavement of which it's coming through.
Which the spring finds its route, okay.
Comes out. So there's been quite a bit of discussion with us and MMWD, particularly on Elm Street is where you're talking about it.
Yeah, I just wonder how many spring, I mean, we must have springs all over the hillsides.
There's only three areas that I'm aware of, two are right there on Elm, and one other one that are really springs. The other ones that we had identified that were mentioned to be springs, or considered to be springs, actually ended up being water services that were failed.
Well, thanks for checking on that.
We are on top of that. But just a standard spring isn't going to just all of a sudden cause competent pavement to buckle and fail, unless it's a significant pressurized type system.
Nice to hear. Correct me if I'm wrong. So how much have we received from Cal Recycle Grant?
I knew you were going to ask, and I'm going through my memory, because there's, I was going to say, I think it's eighty-nine thousand dollars that we'll be getting. This, and it actually stretches farther than that, because rubberized pavement has, it has a way that, or it's stronger, it's more durable, so that the actual pavement section that we go for, instead of maybe needing three inches of asphalt, will need two and a half, or two. And so we can go with a smaller tonnage. So we save in that way, too. So the grant pays for the differential of going from regular asphalt to rubber, and then we are able to save on the quantity of asphalt. So it's got a double benefit.
And how much would Ross Valley, and thank you, I'm so happy to see Dartmouth up there, Magnolia to Harvard? It's fantastic. So how much of that will Ross Valley Sanitary pay? Do you know?
It's a significant amount. I'd be lying if I told you I remembered the exact number, but basically it's half a roadway width for Larkspur Plaza Drive from Doherty almost all the way to Creekside. It's going to be half of Dartmouth from Magnolia to Tulane. And then it's going to be half of the road of Magnolia for those stretches. So it is significant.
High percentage.
It's significant. They are going to be paying for what it would be for us to do the entire half road width for those segments.
Great, good to hear. Thank you.
So going back to the picture, now with those roads that were selected, now we've increased the amount of pavement area to seventeen percent with this next year's project of those, doing the work on those proposed streets. And you can see where we're starting to touch now. The Cal Grant is a two-year grant, and so they were asking for not only what streets were being proposed for this year, but they were also asking for streets for next year. And so we were looking at where we could apply those, and so again, we identified a number of different streets, using the different approaches that we were trying to implement. Not only the coordinated projects approach, where are the utilities working, and what can they help fund? But then we were looking at those roads that were on that worst-first category that we need to address. But now we're starting to implement in sixteen, seventeen, fiscal year sixteen and seventeen, being able to get into some of those critical PCI streets that we need to start addressing. And so we're looking at now being able to do more complete neighborhoods. You'll see here, and pick up over in this area here, it's where we're trying to focus, and I forget, there's the Palm Hill, and I've got to go back. Yeah. Heatherwood Gardens was the other one I was trying to remember, up there. And so now with that, we're going to be touching thirty percent of the street system. And so you can see we're gaining traction. And what we're doing on these streets is we're not having to do super-aggressive type rehabilitation like we did on, say for instance, on El Portal and Via Casitas. We're being able to apply what's referred to as a thin maintenance overlay on those residential streets. And so it's a mix of asphalt that we'll be able to put down about an inch and a quarter thick, a tenth of a foot, and it's blended together with a rubberized terminal blend asphalt binder. So it gives it more flexibility, and therefore will help retard the cracks, and produce a smoother ride and quieter ride on those streets.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
That section approach? What, the last time thin treatments were applied on the street, I'm going back twenty years even, there's a washboard effect that is created by conditions, I'm sure, that are not ideal. How does this approach avoid that? It's a, you know what I'm talking about.
A lot of that is in the paving technique, and if they're hurrying too fast with their rollers and their paving machines. And so that can happen on this, but with proper inspection, we're going to be able to tell them now, let's not rush on this, and let's make sure we get it right. We'll be using a rubber tire roller that will, or specifying a rubber tire roller, which is a pneumatic-type roller, which helps knead the material together, so it helps smooth out that type of an effect on the paving.
Thank you.
In seventeen and eighteen, just trying to look out even further, the area that really is coming up in terms of worst-first is the Riviera Circle neighborhood. You notice that we're trying to focus in localized areas, we're trying to transition into that area. Again, that's another way to stretch your paving dollars, instead of bouncing all over town, is by keeping the projects closer together, therefore it keeps the mobilization cost down. And so that's what we're trying to do. And then looking ahead at utility company coordination, and also the preventative maintenance that needs to be done. And so just adding in the Riviera Circle area in here, now we're touching thirty-five percent of the street system. We have a few challenges that we continue to face in terms of just trying to get the most out of our paving dollars. The biggest one that is not just facing the city of Larkspur, but it's facing California and beyond, is there's been some federal guideline requirements that have defined when a treatment is a maintenance treatment, and when it's a rehabilitation treatment, and what it triggers in terms of ADA compliance. And so if you do certain types of treatments, it will trigger the need to have to upgrade and make everything ADA compliant on those streets. And so that's starting to consume dollars that you would put on your road, and have to then upgrade the various handicap ramps that are around, and define a path of travel.
And to just kind of put some dollars to this, on Larkspur Landing Circle, we spent about over ninety thousand dollars rehabilitating ADA ramps. So that was taking the ramps that, they were already ramps, they're just new compliance standards that we needed to meet. So this is just something, it's part of it, it's part of what we have to do, and it comes in. The other that we've run into are, years ago, when a lot of the subdivisions were built, there were a variety of utilities that were installed that are literally underneath the pavement. They're not documented, they're privately maintained, and there's just no way to even know that they're there. So we've run into those, particularly on El Portal, and that was expensive to deal with them. So the other is, you'll see particularly up in Green Bray, where people have gone and filled the gutter in with concrete. That's another problem that I'll be coming to you with, how I'd like to address that, because those have a number of challenges to them. One is the paving issue, and what comes in when we try to pave and have all of these poorly constructed, illegal transitions into driveways. But they also are significant impact on our storm drain system and safety along these corridors of forcing the water to jet up, up to twelve to eighteen inches during heavy rainstorms, and cause hazards for people. So these need to be, they need to come out, and we need to work with property owners on how to construct their driveway approaches, so that they are more comfortable for their cars going in and out of their driveways. We do have a county standard that is, it is a standard that's been in place for quite some time, that should have been what was constructed in these, but there are a lot of them. If you drive up and down any street, almost every other house has these. It's, yeah. So they do need to be dealt with. They are poorly constructed, so anytime we go in, you touch them, and they just fall apart, and they didn't go in with permits, people just put them in. So that's something we'll just have to work through to do that.
So in terms of next steps, let's review that, is this what I want to say, or is this what you want to say? You probably.
Lobbying for your own services here. So we pushed really hard after Measure C was adopted, and right, literally the first meeting in July of the first fiscal year meeting for fifteen, sixteen, we came to council saying, please authorize the engineering contract. And we worked furiously to try and get the project out and into construction. That puts us in a timeframe where we're constructing in the winter, which is a challenge. I'm asking this year that we actually authorize to have the engineering started for the fiscal year fifteen, sixteen project now, so that we can actually get into construction before the winter weather. We would wait until after the fiscal year to bid this project and go into construction, so it would be part of the fifteen, sixteen budget, assuming council accepts the project into the budget. But we would advance getting the engineering done now, to get the project done this year. So that's what I'm proposing. We'll be updating the Citizen Oversight Committee, so we're in the process of organizing that meeting right now. And we'll be doing an update to our webpage, showing all of our new roads and these various plans. We also would like to work with the Citizen Oversight Committee to develop an update flyer to the citizens of Larkspur, let them know where their monies are being spent. And then we will continue to work with the utility companies to maximize opportunities. And if they arise, we'll be bringing them to you as a recommendation to modify our plan to accommodate an opportunity. And with that, we're happy to answer any additional questions that anyone may have.
So anyone else?
Does anyone else have any questions? Yes, Catherine?
Is it five members of our Citizen Oversight Committee? I can't remember. And do they serve a two-year or a four-year?
It is five members, yeah.
My recollection is you added a sixth seat to the committee.
Yeah, we have an even number.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we have one member who has indicated that he's gonna step down, and so, we are gonna bring you, he's actually found his own replacement, so that's pretty good, since we sometimes have challenges finding folks, but-
It's two years or four?
It was, I think we did it five, like the cycle of the measure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Mary Grace, when you start working on a street, do you send letters to the neighbors, or how do you go about, I think people know you're gonna be working on their roads?
Yeah, there is, when we get the contractor on board, there is a public information notice that we're gonna be coming in, working on the street, and what have you.
A week ahead, two weeks ahead?
It's usually ten days minimum in advance. So, we will, we start posting prior to that, and hopefully, people are aware of what's going on.
And it's working well for you?
That, people have been pretty excited we're coming in. We've had very few complaints. We had, I think, three people who were feeling that they were not happy that they had to wait while a paving machine went by in order to get into their driveway. I will tell you, to pave Marina Vista and Ardmore was an amazing challenge, but the residents were really wonderful in accommodating, and I cannot express how appreciative I was of Gelotti Brothers Cruise. I went up there several times, they were very polite, they were very accommodating to people, and they really, they really knew what it was to work in these small residential streets, which is a bit of an art. It's a little different than working on a major arterial where you don't have, where you have plenty of room, and here, we don't.
A drone's gonna be one of those also.
A drone will be another challenge.
Art. Great, thank you. Nice job.
Anything else?
Just a comment. I just wanted to tell you how much I value your leadership.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, very constrained set of conditions from the beginning of seeking out money to work on these streets, and maximizing the opportunities is really an art that I think you have mastered, so.
Thank you. I really have to thank my partner in crime here, because every time I come up with a crazy idea, Joe will listen, and he tries to figure out a way that we can make the dollars go a little farther. So, the, without going into a lot of technical nerdy stuff, which is really fun for us engineers, we are applying a lot of different strategies here, which I really am excited are going to benefit Larkspur. And it's great, it really is, it's great to see. So, we're heading down a good path in getting our roads safer for the community, so.
Well, I just wanna say that my expression of gratitude for your leadership is not just about this, it's about everything you've touched.
Thank you so much, thank you. It's been, this is a great place to work.
We're so happy you're here.
I brag about this council, I, Dan will tell you, I'll send him a text, I love our council, they're awesome. So, I appreciate you trusting me, and trusting my team to help make these things happen.
Well, you've really elevated our game.
So, we're, we're doing some great stuff.
I'm gonna miss Mike Myers.
I'm gonna miss Mike Myers, too.
I'm really happy for him.
I am happy. For the public who doesn't know, our superintendent of twenty-eight years, Mike Myers, will be retiring in June, and he is a fixture in Larkspur, he's really a wonderful man. He has taken every crazy idea that I've brought forward and tried to implement it, and really worked through a lot of changes in helping make things really wonderful here. And Larkspur is very blessed to have, really, our whole maintenance crew, I've said it before, and these gentlemen really, they do, they really want to do good things, and we're lucky that they're there, so.
Well, thank you. I have a question and a comment, but I'll wait and see if our member of the public has anything they'd like to ask or make a comment on.
No, it's echoing what council member over was saying, it's appreciated, and I think anything we can do to save our roads in the future, whether it's moratorium or not, is, again, I'm pretty critical of the roads and the overall infrastructure and their work in the city.
Good, thank you. You had mentioned that since we are doing this early, I would assume that we're okay cash flow-wise, because the sales tax revenues are always delayed, so, you know, we started April, which means we don't even get them until, what, August, September?
We never spent the first three months of the sales tax. We put it in a reserve so that Measure C would have the ability to float. So, that has proven to be a good decision, because it's allowed us to be sure we'll have cash flow.
Okay, good, thank you. You know, on our homepage, we have all the Measure C stuff, but all this nice stuff that you have is in the public work section. I'm wondering if we can, like, now that Measure C's over, put that, give it a higher profile on the homepage? Because I think when I direct people to the website, they think it's that Measure C stuff when all the reports in terms of pavement management plan, you know, what you're working on, what you've done already is in more in the public work section.
I can work with the city manager and-
Yeah, it raises the profile.
Update that Measure C link. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, so that'll be nice, because we gotta show off what you've done.
And what's about to be done.
Yeah, and what, exactly what's about to be done. So, yeah, nice job on everything. This is an exciting time to be in Larkspur with all these projects we have going on, and thank you for your work, Joe.
City, that's really impressive.
Yeah, so, our item tonight is actually to, it's a resolution authorizing our city manager to approve and negotiate a management consulting agreement with PEI. So, if we don't have any questions or any discussion, I'll take a motion on that.
I'd like to make a motion on Resolution Number 2015, a resolution of the city council of the city of Larkspur authorizing 2015, 2016 pavement management consulting contract.
Okay, we have a motion, second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Grace.
It passes, thank you, Mary Grace, thank you, Joe. Now, Ron.
There goes our public.
Yeah.
Oh, we have Joe.
Oh, we have Joe.
Okay. So, we do have one more business item tonight, and that's an update on our community facilities project, I guess. Mary Grace, back on again.
So, this is an update to what's going on, our community facility parcel project, which is also really exciting. I love this, I gotta tell you, the community-based planning effort is fun, it's great to see from the public outreach meetings and workshops, the ideas of the public, and then the design team going in there, and you can actually see the ideas of the public popping through in the design. It's really spectacular, so I'm hoping that the public is seeing this, too, and as we move forward and bring them more information on what the facility will look like someday, so. Just, I'm not gonna go through the whole history tonight, just a brief update. So, we have had our public workshops, we had a couple of concept alternatives for discussion point that were brought forward, and the summaries of the comments that came through the public workshops, where people love outdoor rooms, they really would like to have outdoor rooms, they wanted us to consider potentially two entrances, or to basically ensure that connectivity and connection between Doherty and the parking lot to the entrance worked, take advantages of the beautiful views. The outdoor areas should be comfortable, tables, chairs, and benches. For the building program, flexible rooms, this was really key, strong through all of the meetings and all of the information. Cluster the meeting spaces around a courtyard-type area, make sure we're addressing all generations, have a space for our tweens, and create display space, incorporate the history of Larkspur, the history of the site throughout the building, which I'll reiterate, is really a cool point that our architect had brought up early on, and it's a great way to think that this site really has meaning, is that this has been a site of gathering for over four thousand years. And to continue that legacy with this facility where people can gather and meet is just a great concept. And informal passive spaces, so that people can just enjoy. So, the idea was to merge the best of these options, make sure we have a civic presence on Doherty and Rose Lane, Southern Courtyard with the integrated flex rooms, a civic entry on the west side, and option for access from the south, visual connection to our downtown. This is an extension of our downtown, we don't want it to be lost down there. View gardens with quiet reading areas, and again, the beautiful views. So, this is where we are right now. So, our advisory committee members on council haven't even quite seen this, this is the first. So, the, we've continued our work effort regarding the parking lot. We have a, this building, which is a combination of the A-B and moving forward with the design of the facility. They've moved forward with a concept here for an angular drop-off, which is closer to the entrance, and allows for the ADA parking to be closer up, and control the traffic so that we don't have people who are gonna race around and pass one another. This has also been designed to accommodate our fire trucks and make sure they can get in and out as well. So, this is just kind of a snapshot of where they are in the design right now. This isn't a finished product, it's just where we are right now. So, we've been moving forward. We have our covered, proposed covered promenade through here, our extended porch area, outdoor cafe or seating area, and the interior is similar to what our advisory team has seen this last week, with big kind of entrance living room area, our area to receive books, and have staff areas, our meeting room, large meeting room here. And this area provides kind of a cool opportunity, where there'll be movable stacks in this area, but those stacks can, will be designed to slide off into openings or what have you, and these meeting areas back here can, right now, they're identifying storage here, but we're looking at possibly moving this storage to the outside, so these meeting rooms can be connected maybe with doors. And then, you have this whole potential foyer area that can open into these meeting rooms and out into this big outdoor room. So, you can have this whole combination of area actually service an event. Then, we move into the more formal kind of library area, children's area that would open into its own children's garden, or out into the outdoor room, teen space, and the collections and readers that would have a nice big skylight area, bringing light in, and our technical staff area. So, like I say, we're still, still working and creating, this is just a snapshot into what the architects, what we used to call a drafting board, is, and it's exciting to see things moving forward.
I'm sorry, are you taking questions now?
Sure.
The Doherty facing, Doherty facing, meeting rooms in the purple, can you explain the rationale for why that new angle exists there? That, in the last drawings I saw, there was a straight across.
Actually, this is the last drawing. There was, there was an option, there was an option that had a straight across, but this was the preferred option of the advisory committee, that just had this little bit of articulation in there, and this'll allow them to have a little bit more planting in this area, be a little bit more visibly appealing in looking out this direction, what have you.
Okay.
Mary Grace?
Yes. How about the fence? What do they decide about the fence for the childrens? Remember, you had that, so it's a safe area?
I don't have an update on that right now.
Okay, all right.
If I recall correctly, there was a desire to have the children's area have an enclosure so that kids could come out and take a break with a parent or what have you, and have it be more secured. But I believe this area was looking at being potentially more open, and I believe that's where things are headed right now.
Not closed off?
Yeah.
Before you move on, Mary Grace, I wanted to add to Vice Mayor Way's comment and question. And one thing we've really enjoyed about working with this architecture firm, LMS that you selected, is there's not an ego there, where they're stuck on an idea. Every meeting, people give them feedback, and we then talk with them, they pepper us with questions about the feedback they heard, and then the feedback shows up, and you get folks saying, it's starting to look too done, I'm not gonna get a chance to influence this. And that's absolutely not the case. So, your question about why are the meeting rooms at an angle, I don't want folks to take Mary Grace's response and think that's been decided. That, none of this, there's not a single thing up there that is done deal.
Right.
And people need to understand that if you came in tomorrow and you convinced the design team, and the staff advisory team, and the advisory committee of policymakers, that some element of this would make a heck of a lot more sense if we all looked at it from another angle. I just need folks to understand, so far, our experience with this firm is, they sit there and go, wow, didn't see that great idea, let's get it into the design. And this, that's why Mary Grace is really emphasizing, this is still not a finished product. We are getting a lot closer, where we're reflecting all of the community feedback that we're getting.
Yeah, and I, please, yes, I would love to reiterate that. I speak with the design team at least three, four times a week, and this is so true, they really are taking on the community's vision. It is, it is really wonderful to see, and they do, they take all the comments, they love the interaction with the advisory, they love the workshops, all of the input, and they try to take what's being said and bring it to life. So, every one of these touches with the public or comment, it is so beneficial to them to say, okay, that's, they really understand this is Larkspur's dream, this is not their dream. And it's a special thing, but they are applying their extreme technical skill and bringing all that forward into developing something really spectacular for this community.
Question, Mr. Mayor. I have had the opportunity to talk to Lynn Bagley, who runs the community farmer's markets that move around. She got booted from the Marin Country Mark. They had a small market there on weekends, and now, the Country Mark runs their own, but she still operates the small ones that are in the town of Ross and in Mill Valley. She would be interested in the opportunity to talk with the right people, to see if there's a way to allow her market to take place in the parking lot. But I don't wanna get out ahead of any constraint that might prevent that. So, my question is, is the process open enough, or is the design, in your opinion, as our transportation and circulation expert, would it allow such a discussion to take place? Or should we not pursue that?
I think I might defer to the city manager and how he'd like to, in any shape-
Because I don't wanna take it further if it's gonna be a dead end.
Yeah.
You know, I have to hearken back to Ms. Bagley's attempt to come to the downtown parking lot, and she went through a public process, and there was quite a bit of support and quite a bit of opposition. And I'm not sure, based on, I actually sat through that zoning administration hearing to see what the public feedback was, and, you know, sentiments do change, but based on that hearing, I'm not sure this parking lot's gonna be the right parking lot for that. I think if the community supports a farmer's market of some kind in the downtown district, which I would consider this part of, we can accommodate that, and we could talk about strategies to promote that. But I think it may be a little challenged on this property.
Is it worth giving it a try? I mean-
I mean, or should we not even bring it up again?
As far as the parking lot being able to accommodate, the parking lots like this can accommodate such a, physically. It really comes into what the community will support and would like.
I mean, I guess the question is, do you see this as an opportunity to bring people together, or is it going to be polarizing?
If I may. We've talked a lot at the committee level about the parking lot closing to accommodate events that incorporate the entire property. So, events that may be partly in the building, partly out of the building, might be in the landscape area, might be in the parking lot. Art shows, for example, are one that we've talked about. I don't think the property is big enough, and given its close proximity to residential units, to have a use only in that parking lot like you're describing. I think it'll be challenging.
Even if it were only a few hours a week?
Well, again, I would want to have a community process, but I do think there are other places that are better suited in the clasp area than this particular one.
Good enough for me, thanks. Yeah, what about over at Piper Park?
That, you know, if Ms. Bagley thought that would be a successful venue, I think that'd be a much better location.
That's very helpful, thank you. And thank you, Mary Grace.
But can I just follow up with this comment? Because I think it's important that, and you can go back to that last picture with the, that the design of the parking lot and the egress into it, to be conducive with preserving as much integrity of not interrupting the community around it and the housing around it as much as possible by having that one access point off of, what is that, Rose?
Rose.
Rose, as opposed to having anything off of Orchid and in and out on both sides to minimize. I think we need to be very cautious, very committed to trying to minimize the impact to the neighborhood to the greatest extent possible. And that may be much more of a greater impact than I'm willing to support for a farmer's market in that location. Now, farmer's market may be in a different location, but that's probably for another day.
Now, my takeaway from input tonight is not here.
Yeah.
So, the next couple of slides are just giving an idea of some sections through the building and how light would be accommodated and this type of thing. These were presented to our advisory committee. Maybe I get to show them, maybe I don't. There we go, oops. Oh, my golly, geez, what psycho on me. This just gives an idea of kind of how sun would hit. This section is looking at, this is Rose Lane over on this side. This would be the promenade, the covered promenade. This would be the open garden area, and kind of just looking at how we can take advantage of the natural resources and bring them into the facility.
So, these are, that section's cut?
So, this section.
West to east?
Did I do this right? I'm sorry, I misspoke, I misspoke.
There's Doorty, right.
My, my error. This is going from.
The sun's in the south where it should be.
Yes. Thank you. Woo, getting late. Giving you an idea, just how we can take advantage of that and keep the building with positive light and minimize the use of artificial resources. Oh, my gosh. There we go. This is giving an idea, again, of how the solar arrays can be identified on the building, take advantage of using that sunlight to transfer into power, and again, how ventilation could work and lighting. It really doesn't want to. There we go. Okay, we're going to give up here on these sections here at some point.
You want us to do it real fashioned?
Yeah. I must have a weak battery or something. So, this is, this is just a concept slide. This isn't saying anything's chosen or what have you, but just starting to throw out ideas of concept of how to implement a more modern structure, still holding warmth, and implementing or integrating the indoor, outdoors, all the themes that have been discussed through the whole process. We also had a bit of a sustainability workshop, which was really interesting and fun, talking about what are the goals for sustainability. And in the master plan, we identified a minimum of lead silver to be accommodated. We're looking at how to reduce, reuse, recycle through the facility. That's through the types of materials, how it's designed to encourage people to live sustainably, bike parking, low water use landscape. Minimize resources, energy and water, and maximize occupant comfort. So, if people feel comfortable, they're not going to be asking for air conditioning to come on or heat to come on, and we can keep those resources down, the impact on those resources. And so, that's all come into the design. They look at how to use natural daylighting, how to allow for natural airflow, all these fun things, connectivity to nature so people feel like they're part of their environment. Thermal comfort. We had an engineering team who went into a lot of nerdy type stuff on this, you can tell how excited they were about what they're talking about. It's great, but it's wonderful to know that we have on our design team that expertise and that thought of how to have this be a real place to help people understand and learn and live in a sustainable fashion. Again, just even talking acoustics, right down to every detail of just how you're going to feel, you're going to want to be comfortable throughout the building. So, again, maximizing comfort, natural daylight, people feel comfortable, and how to control shade and use the different materials. And non-toxic, filtered fresh air, smoke-free environment, again, comfort. And then the outdoor areas, how to also make those be sustainable, so using natural plant life that can take on, keep the connection, make it so people feel comfortable outdoors as well. And the goal is the maximum benefit for the minimum cost. So, this is something that our design team really has on their mind, is that not just to put a lot of high-tech items into the building that sound really great for sustainability, but they're also looking at what is the operations and maintenance? How's that all going to work? How's the city going to be able to sustainably maintain this from a financial standpoint? So, that's the end of our update for tonight.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mary Grace? Yes, Deanna?
Just a comment. You're a really effective spokesperson for this process. I just want you to know.
I'm excited about this process. It's fun.
It shows.
Yeah, it's contagious.
It's terrific. I think it's a real unifying. It's working.
I've loved how many people have participated, and when you look at our workshops, you get different people coming, and it's really a neat thing to see. So, I still think we need a cheer for the project.
And I think reaching out to the community would be smart, one more time.
We are, we are looking at doing that.
Well, I believe the appreciation and respect for the history of the location and telling the story of the city through the design of this is a very valuable theme.
I think that speaks volumes to our consultants who, how they just have really embraced the community and the heritage of the site, and it's really special. So, we've got the right team. You all did a wonderful job in choosing a good consultant, so thank you.
Anne, anything? Kathleen?
Yeah, I, having gone to all the workshops and to the advisory meetings, I want to echo that also, that LMS, I think, has really listened very well, and the last drawings that I saw, and the incorporation of not only the community spaces, the flexibility, using the outdoor space as actually a room, and so maximizes what amount of community activity can happen there, I thought was very ingenious of them, and very applicable to the Mediterranean type of climate that we live in. So, it'll be able to use those spaces year-round in ways that I don't think we could have without that thoughtfulness to it. I really appreciate that. They really do listen, and I'm very pleased that a lot of people have been able to provide feedback that have a primary focus on library and people who have a primary focus on recreation to merge both of those. So, I'm looking forward to seeing what goes on in the next couple of months.
Yes, me too.
I received, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
One email I received caught my imagination as another unifying idea, and it was really the choice of a word. Lilia Langto sent me an email that she, I believe she shared with several people, and she was supportive of some of Helen Hitekamp's thoughts, but she used the word cultural center instead of community center in conjunction with the library. And I thought the use of the word cultural really bridged some of these distinctions that have been barriers to people really coming and rallying around this. And I'd like to just offer that, as I think there's a future for the use of that word.
I think that's a great word, and when you compare it to what we've heard, even in the Survey Monkey, even classes people are asking to take. It's so interesting to see because the variety is, it's just, it is culture. It's about learning, it's about history, it's about encouraging our youth and what have you, and it was just a great variety. The other thing that, and I believe someone on the Heritage Committee during our first workshop brought it up, and I thought, wow, what a cool idea, was implement the history through the building, maybe have like history niches where you have little windows into the history of Larkspur throughout the facility. So, the whole facility acts as a cultural center or history center in supporting what the community has been, not just in recent years, but over thousands of years. And it was really a neat idea.
Well, I just really believe that it's going to take that sort of power, describing the project, to bring together the community to fund it. And I would just encourage everybody to grab inclusive vocabulary like that every chance we get to bring people together around this.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Okay. I just had one question. I don't know if Deanna or you will be able to answer it, but maybe what you can do for, you know, our residents is kind of summarize what you see as the critical meetings between now and the end of June.
We can do that. Yeah, for right now, we are looking at, we'll be posting up on the website, sending out via email, posting in the City Hall, Recreation Center, and the library, an upcoming workshop that we're, we don't have the exact date yet, and we're looking to coordinate with the various commissions and council and do something possibly on the site to help people understand spatial awareness and where we are with the next steps. So, I'm hoping that'll be mid-April, but we don't have a date exactly as yet. After that, we will be moving into the planning commission process for design review, and those will be public meetings that will also, the dates will be posted on our webpage on the planning commission agenda. I have been bringing up dates to every commission and council every month, so they are more than welcome to attend those and get updates, provide any comment, opinion. There is a spot on the webpage where they can still provide input and comment, give us a call, send us an email, and stay connected.
Is there a planning commission workshop next week? Can't remember. There was something in March, I thought.
Originally, the planning commission meeting next week, next week, right?
We're going to do an update.
Was going to be a major presentation by the consulting team. And our feeling was that it would be better to have Mary Grace do a staff-level presentation, keep the commission up to speed, and then shift those dollars into a third community engagement meeting. And what you heard Mary Grace start to talk about is, we're hoping to notice that as a meeting that any policymaker, city council member, planning commission member, Heritage Board member, we'll notice all the boards, it'll be a big joint meeting, so that way majorities of the boards and commissions and the council can come to the last meeting and engage on a substantive level without a Brown Act concern. So, I think that'll be a really nice forum. We're still working on the format, and some of it may be whether we could do it out on the property or not, which would be kind of neat. We're not sure we'll be ready in time to do that. But, so we shifted those dollars, so a lot of folks I know had kind of circled that March planning commission meeting. That substantive discussion by the planning commission will take place probably at the end of April or in May.
It's a great idea, yeah.
Okay, so after the design review process, what will come to us? In terms of a design review, I guess, approval or decision by the planning commission, whatever comes to us will, I guess, members of the public are asking, okay, how much can change after the planning commission has reviewed it and after the, after the city council has reviewed it?
If you treat this as you would any other project, actually, very little, because presumably the project applicant won't be appealing anything that the planning commission decided. So, assuming that we aren't going to appeal against ourselves, I think the last trip to the council meeting is probably more of a celebratory moment, that the real substantive final meeting is the planning commission meeting for the design review approval.
And that will be in May?
Is that?
That's our goal.
Yeah, that's your goal, right, right. Okay, that helps us to answer some of the questions that, I don't know if everyone else is getting them, but I get the occasional email, you know, what the next steps are, are there any more meetings, you know, that type of thing.
I do think for explaining to the public, though, that's a key point. We're treating ourselves just like we would any, anyone else. It's just since we are the applicant, we're really unlikely to appeal decisions by the planning commission. So, that's why they're sort of going to be the end of the line.
Okay. Can I comment just on that? I think at a certain level, the decisions are made where there's a, by the time you get to May, there's going to be enough about the right decisions at the right time that have been made to move forward. But that by no means indicates the design evolution will stop, especially with a project like this. That's going to continue all the way through construction. I mean, the refinement of these things, especially in terms of cost benefit and best choices based on the information, which is just keeps, is going to keep coming in. So, I think we can be encouraging that it's going to continue to evolve with the community. And don't think that we have to be defensive about there being a lock on the decisions after May.
Yeah, and I think that's what the public wants to hear, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, I'll add one concluding remark to this also. I think people have asked me what would be a definition of success, and I think the definition of success in part will be when we actually construct the building and the world has changed around us as the library world and the community center world and our, and our public and our community are constantly changing, we're going to say a sentence along the lines of, "We're so glad we designed the building this way because we can adapt. We're ready to go with whatever the world wants the day we open the doors."
Okay. Joe, you're a member of the public here tonight. Do you have any questions or comments for Mary Grace?
I'm ready to go to the building right now and see it.
Oh, okay.
If you have a check, we'll take it.
I like the use of cultural and calling it a cultural center. When Councilmember Hilmer mentioned that, I went. When, when Councilmember Hilmer mentioned that, I went, "That, that feels really good based on what you're seeing up there." It spoke to a different part of you than a community center would, would have.
Probably change the name.
All right. Great job. Like, I think it was Councilmember Hilmer, someone mentioned it, but yeah, you're bringing a lot of energy to this. Think, uh...
We're a team.
Yeah, yeah, the community's energized about this and...
It is, it's a great, great opportunity.
Yeah, also thank you to our two council members, Morrison and Way, for, uh, you know, leading this process as well, and everyone working together.
Well, just one last thing. I can't get over the change in kind of a philosophical point of view that you and Dan have helped bring to Larkspur. Instead of turning away from conflicts, you face them. If you can't find a way, you make one. I just think this is a, this is a, this is a new level of professionalism that I think that we can really be proud of as a city, so I just want to say I'm, I'm very, very grateful.
I'll second that. Thank you. I think we need a resolution.
Yeah. All right, well, if there are no other comments or guidance for, uh, staff, then I'll take a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Motion, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Great, thank you.
And we are out.